...states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Trustee, again, do we have a report of actions taken in close session?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. At tonight's closed session, the Board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Salaries are for informational purpose only and are not voted on by the Board. All the following votes were six to one votes, with all trustees in favor, with one trustee being absent, that'd be trustee Withrow. The Board voted tonight to appoint William Cordero as interim Vice President of Student Services at Mary College at $9,975.75 monthly, effective August 1, 2013 through November 30, 2013. Brenda Martinez as interim Assistant to the Chancellor at $80,000 annually, effective August 5, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Antonio Baridero as interim Dean of Workforce Development and Applied Sciences, Berkeley City College, at $110,000 annually, effective August 13, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Inger Stark as interim Vice President of College of, Vice President of Destruction, excuse me, at College of Alameda at $130,000 annually, effective August 12, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Nadia Bishop as interim Director of Employee Relations and Diversity Programs at $130,000 annually, effective August 23, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Cynthia Denise Richardson as Dean of Academic and Student Affairs, Laney College, at $110,000 annually, effective August 21, 2013 through June 30, 2015. Mildred Lewis as Dean of Academic and Student Affairs at $112,500 annually, effective September 11, 2013 through June 30, 2015. Petrol P.J. Shelton as interim Director, Deputy Sector Navigator Program, a grant-funded position, College of Alameda, $85,000 annually, effective September 11, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Thomas Wang as internal auditor at $100,000 annually, effective January, September 30, 2013 through June 30, 2015. We also voted tonight to extend Jason Harvey's appointment through September 25, 2013, as the interim Director of Student Activities and Campus Life at Laney College at $90,000 annually. And the Board also voted this evening to continue the student disciplinary appeal of Sakai Bonds at Berkeley City College to its next regular meeting to be held on, to be held on September 24. If any of the new appointed administrators are here, if you could please stand to be recognized, we can welcome you to the District. Mr. President, that concludes the report from tonight's closed session.
Thank you. Now we move to the agenda, and is there a motion to approve the agenda? We'll modify it if there is a motion to do so.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove item number 28 from the agenda. Item number 28 is consider approval of resolution number 1314-18 for Board Approved Construction Settlement Agreement with Mondo USA Inc. Removing that from the agenda. And I'd also like to ask the Board to please, that we also remove for approval, item number one, approval of the regular Board Meeting minutes for pending corrections.
Mr. President, I would also ask that we remove off the consent calendar, item number seven, which is consider approval of contracts for the production and printing of college brochures for three colleges.
Are there any other items from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, item number 14.
Item number 14?
Remove it from the consent calendar.
So that we can discuss them.
Item number seven, for the record, is again, consider approval of contracts for the production and printing of college brochures for Berkeley City College, College of Alameda, and Laney College. That has been moved from the consent agenda onto the, onto the Board Consideration Calendar. Item number 14 is also being removed from the consent agenda, per trustee Brown. Item number 14 is consider approval of resolution 131420 in support of the Trial of the Century.
All right. With those changes, is there a move to approve the agenda?
Is there a move?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Not much enthusiasm here.
Well, we're waiting for a second, I think is...
Is there a move to approve the agenda?
I moved that.
It's been moved. Is there a second, please? There's a second now. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's much better. And as, as writing in the note, we moved the approval of the minutes to a future agenda, and the errors will be corrected. Now we come to public communication, and I ask, are there speakers that wish to...
We do have some speaker cards, I don't have them yet.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have six speakers, communications from the public, and we also have Timothy Bryce wanting to speak on items number nine and 10, as well as Matthew Goldstein speaking on item number 22, system software upgrade. So if we, before we consider items nine and 10 and number 22, those speakers will be heard. At this time, we have communications from members of the public. The first speaker is Matthew Goldstein, followed by Romeo Garcia, then Mr. Louis Young.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Goldstein, President of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. On behalf of the 1,000 teachers and nurses and librarians and counselors we represent, I want to welcome everyone back to the spring, I'm sorry, the fall term, getting ahead of myself. PFT's negotiating team met throughout the summer with the district side negotiators, and we made some, some good progress, particularly over the last couple of sessions. We'll meet again this Friday, the 13th, and we're going into the meeting pretty sanguine that we'll be able to make further progress on the few major outstanding issues. As I've said before, once we sign off, there's every reason to expect that faculty will see their first raise in almost seven years. Faculty's very excited about that. We're also upbeat about the prospect of securing at last a 25-step salary schedule for our part-time faculty, and we're confident that funds for professional development and sabbaticals will at last return to the colleges. Frankly, the toughest issues remaining on the table are philosophical differences rather than monetary issues, and these issues are stickier precisely because they're not easily resolvable by looking at a concrete bottom line. In any case, we'll keep you posted. While improved district finances are certainly cause for faculty optimism, there's still a number of outstanding issues that require PFT vigilance. There's been a long-term breakdown in the evaluation process of faculty on campus, and this has proved to be a particularly intractable problem. In addition to putting the colleges out of compliance with ed code, the apparent administrative indifference to the faculty evaluation process is harming hundreds of part-time faculty members whose access to the part-time rehire pool is compromised when the evaluation process is not followed. So PFT is encouraging the district and the colleges to devote real resources to making sure that the evaluation process is properly followed. When faculty aren't evaluated properly, the single most valuable professional, professional development tool available to faculty is not available to them, of course, and their students will suffer as well. We're pleased to see that the colleges are filling out their management teams, I see another six more hires were made tonight. But it's necessary, necessary to point out that PFT has seen the volume of concerns from the, from the colleges around new administrators not quite familiar with administrative procedure, board policy, the PFT contract really explode in the last couple of weeks. So tonight, I'd like to urge the district to develop some kind of training module for new administrators, whether they're new to Peralta or new to administration, that would acquaint them with the particulars of our AP and BP, and of course, the PFT contract. I would hasten to point out that generations of faculty and administrators have worked hard to try to come up with the board policy, the administrative procedures that we have, and of course, the contract as well. And we all have an interest in seeing that the rules are followed strictly. So to flout the system, whether it's because of an insistence on administrative prerogative or out of ignorance, is really unacceptable. So please entertain that possibility. Again, welcome back, or just welcome if you're new, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Romeo Garcia, followed by Louis Young, and then Matt Lonza.
Good evening. My name is Romeo Garcia, the Executive Director of the Peralta Colleges Foundation, and I'm glad to be here this evening to bring three, three items. First is a thank you to everyone who was involved in our 10th Annual Golf Tournament, from the trustees to the college presidents, members of the Peralta community, and certainly our sponsors from throughout the, throughout the Bay Area, who decided to help us with, with our annual fund, one of our annual fundraisers. It was a very successful day. We built a lot of, built and rebuilt a lot of good relationships with the, with the sponsorship community, as well as created a new relationship with Sequoia Country Club, who, when I went up the next day to retrieve some of the items that we left there, the general manager hoped that we would be back this coming year, this next year, and we've already set the date for that, tentatively for May 5, and that we would also, he would also entertain the opportunity to sponsor donor events at the Sequoia Country Club as well. So it was a good day for those who were there. It looked like everyone who was there that I see who's here had a good time, and thank you very much again for participating and for supporting that event. The second announcement is that we have put on our foundation website that the annual Scholarship Dinner is scheduled for November 21st. We're glad to be honoring, we want to have several honorees for that evening. One of the honorees will be Peralta College alumnus Joe Morgan, and he has agreed to, to give us the opportunity to honor him and to present him on that evening, and so we're looking forward to that as well, and we're looking at reaching out to others who have been supportive of the Peralta Colleges. The final thing I'd like to mention is that we have brought in November 21st. The third item is to announce that we have begun orientations and will be having the first cohort of students in the new Foundation Scholars Program to begin this semester. The Foundation Scholars Program will provide scholarships to students, and in addition to that, they will receive guidance through one of our staff members, who will be the advisor for that program, and our goal is to make sure that students who come to the Peralta Colleges and demonstrate another way, because there are many programs throughout the district that already support students, but we know that we are, we would always like to have additional support. So those students will be able to receive guidance through the Foundation and assist them in networking throughout the district so that they can come and accomplish the goals, their educational goals, in a timely manner, and move on to either the workforce, which they planned for, or to continue on to four-year universities. So thank you very much for the, the time to speak this evening, and I'm looking forward to another strong academic year.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Louis Young, followed by Matt Lonza, then James Blake.
Good evening to Chancellor and the Board. Seems like I'm here pretty regular, should be a board member. However, I'm here today because of a sick leave issue that I've encountered, and my time, so far as I'm concerned, I get it from my pay slip, and I have a bushel of it, and it has the amount of, as far as I was concerned, 436.2 hours. The dean called me and explained to me that he was taking my class away from me because I was ill, and I told him, you are not taking my class, illness is taking my class. So therefore, on my pay slip, every month was short 344, $45 a month, was short. I, I took offense to it, and I'm trying to work through the union to get this resolved. I don't, I don't, I don't figure out the sick leave, but I do know what these numbers are. And as the Chancellor told me, they must be authentic because he signed off on it. So I, that's the, that's one of the problems I have. The other problem I have with is that I was here early on and I had an issue, and I told him about it, I told, in fact, I, on December 12, I think, was the night that the inauguration situation was, and I didn't want to occupy that time. I was told that there was no nexus involved in the situation that I was in. Well, I had to go back and look, find out what the nexus was. The nexus was the salary and the benefits paid to the individual that got the position. So money is always a nexus, and you can say you don't have one, but when it goes from the time it starts until you end, that is a nexus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. The next speaker is Mr. Matt Lonza, and then James Blake.
Good evening, members of the Board, Chancellor Ortiz, Cabinet and Presidents, as well as the public. Matt Lonza with SEIU Local 10 to 1. I am the field representative for the classified union representing over 300 permanent and hourly employees of Peralta. Before I comment on the happenings, I just wanted to share my deepest appreciation for the memorial we had here on Friday, August 30, for one of our beloved members, Cheryl Queen. In particular, Chancellor Ortiz spoke in a manner that frankly made me cry. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but it did, did her justice, and it was a, a great celebration of her life, and she was a longtime bargaining team member, steward, and was a member all her time here in Peralta, and she is still very deeply missed. So thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, District, for putting on that function for us. Like PFT, 10 to 1 is in bargaining and is also optimistic. With the passage of the parcel tax and Prop 30 last year, we enter what, for me, as a young field rep, is uncharted territory, i.e. not bargaining layoffs, but instead actually bargaining money, which is a little surreal, but we'll take it, obviously. And I wanted to share our optimism, much in the same vein that Matt did, Matt Goldstein, and we meet tomorrow, and crossing our fingers, we walk out of there with some paper with signatures on it. So hopefully, the next board meeting will be a you-all blessing and agreement. I don't want to get ahead of myself, I'm maybe a bit of an optimist, but I, I have a good feeling about it. But I can't come up here and just bring compliments and happiness, of course, I work for a labor union, and I do have some axes to grind. And one that we've noticed, as the colleges, through their, through their Senate process and shared governance, are looking at budgeting certain positions, and we were presented with the six new administrative-level professionals here in the District, I very much want to, in the same vein that Matt sort of called upon the Board to investigate, or rather, you know, look into the issue of evaluations. For us, we are really focused on hoping that we have a, a real buy-in, looking at staff support. We have new administrative personnel who will surely require somebody to help answer phones, set meetings, answer requests, do requisitions, and all the rest of it, and we are sorely lacking in that field. We do not have enough funding for staff assistants, senior clerical, executive assistants, secretaries, and all the rest of it. And we are asking for funding that is specifically tailored for those areas to be given to the colleges, and for the colleges to do their, their, you know, what is prudent in looking at those positions and making them priorities. You know, we want these, we want the new deans and the VPIs and whatnot to be successful, but if they don't have the actual bodies and the people to help them be successful, everybody's just banging their head against the wall. So with that, again, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. If I could have the clerk please add both clocks to three minutes, I'd appreciate that. The next speaker is James Blake, and the speaker after that is Helene Lacar.
Good evening, everyone. My purpose for visiting today is to reflect some of the good things that are happening in the Peralta District. I find that this year, under the leadership of Chancellor Ortiz, there's been more engagement and cooperation between all sectors of Peralta's community. And, and that being the case, we had, had the opportunity to attend a customer service workshop that was sponsored by the Chancellor, to help us to see that it's incumbent upon us to take our jobs and the level of service that we render to our students very seriously. And in doing so, we can help achieve the success that the state and our taxpayers are hoping that we accomplish with the bond measure and the Prop 30 funding. But I think we also need to, to look at some other opportunities in terms of driving our decisions that are based on data that help us make the right decisions in terms of allocation of human resources. One of the things that I'm looking forward to is putting the resources closer to the students at the colleges. We need more structure, as both Matt and also, both Matts had mentioned previously, at the college level, to be effective. My interest in engaging in shared governance is that we are successful at educating our students and giving them the best possible outcomes, and that we do it well. And so one of our primary concerns is that as we get more money coming into the District, that we allocate it in a way that we service all our sectors properly so that we can support our mission of educating our students and ensuring their success. We should always think about whether or not something is working for our students and working well. We should include our students more in terms of reaching some of those decisions. We should ask them, how are we doing? And, and then be ready to change if we feel we're not getting the outcomes that we're looking for. So, and moving forward for this, this semester, I'm looking forward to engaging with all sectors of shared governance, and encouraging both administrators, faculty, and classified to do our utmost to ensure that our students have a very good experience with Peralta, take ownership of our character and our reputation, and make sure that we're passing something of, of value to those who we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. The last speaker, Mr. President, is Helene Lacar.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back here and to hear good news and to bring good news. It's a delight to rejoin these meetings. This past year, at the very same time that City College of San Francisco was given dire warning that it would be de-accredited if it did not correct major deficiencies and so on, this district was promoted to full accreditation on all four campuses in the same announcement that day. We were very excited to see that, but we also had lived through the very painful times that it took us to get here. And so we felt, as the Lake of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Amoryville, that everyone in this institutional stakeholder community deserved a great round of applause from the general public for all the extraordinary work that you have done to get here. So we wrote a big letter to all the trustees, which you will read at your leisure, I have extra copies if anybody wants it. But mostly, I want to reaffirm that we are your community, and you are our community, and we need to stay in close touch so that all the good things that are coming our way, and I've been hearing good things from all the other public speakers, that they continue to happen, and that we can then work with you to bring the colleges and their programs and their services to the attention of the wider community. And we would love to be the middle person in between men and women. That's who we are. We're good at spreading news, and good news is terrific. Thank you so much.
And Helene, I wanted to personally thank you for all the work you've done for the District, all the work in Oversight Committee for bond expenditures, and for your general work throughout the community. You've been an inspiration to all of us, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may take a point of personal privilege, I'd just like to recognize our former colleague, student trustee Esteem Brumfield, who's here tonight also. Esteem, welcome. Welcome back. And that concludes communications from members of the public, Mr. President.
And now we move to reports from constituent groups and from the Chancellor's team. We begin with the reports from the Associated Student Government.
I'm Elasia Williams from the College of Alameda. I am the newly-elected student body president, and I would like to give you a report on the happenings at the ASCOA. I am actually happy to report that even without a advisor, that the ASCOA, the Associated Students of College of Alameda, is actually doing quite well. We have remained organized and efficient throughout the summer, and because of that, we were the only student body to, able to give the $500 to the PSC, or the Peralta Student Council, for their retreat. As of right now, we have 11 senators sitting on our Board. Hopefully, by Monday, we will actually have 13. I've heard that this is actually the first time that we will have a full Senate in the past four years. Our events coming up would have to be, the first event would be on the 17th for Constitution Day. We will construct a mock, mock constitution signing for this event. We also have a bridge day where all of our departments on the college campus will be able to come together and provide student services to the students. Also, we have hired our cafeteria vendor. If you do not know, or if any of the public does not know, the College of Alameda has actually been without a food cafeteria for a while now, and so we have hired a food vendor to bring food onto the campus. So right now, that's working well. We have about five vendors on campus, Monday through Friday, so it is actually looking like a real food court. We also get 60 vouchers per month worth $5 to give back to students who are in need. I will be attending the Congressional Black Caucus Conference in DC, and we are VP, Jeremy Rowley, will be attending the California Community Colleges Student Affairs Conference next month. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there reports from other student leaders? Seeing none, we move to reports from the Chancellor's team.
Thank you very much, President Galasa. Helene Lacar mentioned a letter that was distributed this evening, and while she preferred not to read from it, I do want to read at least one sentence, which says, "Strong leadership and public progress reports rebuild the trust that had crumbled under the years of covering up failing accountability systems here at the Peralta District." Well, when I arrived here a year ago, I saw the very same failing accountability systems and needed to put that on my agenda as fundamental to... and needed to put that on my agenda as fundamental to the culture change that I believe we are undergoing here at the Peralta Colleges. But one thing I learned from my previous employment is that you can talk the talk, walk the talk, but if you don't take people along with you, it doesn't change. One of the things I realized is that we all, meaning staff, faculty, certainly administrators, need to know what behavior is expected when we talk about accountability. So James Blake mentioned a customer training initiative that I implemented early in August, where we had invited all classified staff and administrators to look at what customer service means to the Peralta District. Customer service is about seeing things through the lens of our students and our faculty. It is about everything you see about you speaks to the quality of institution. And finally, it means, how do we create the wow moment? And while that was one workshop, I am committed to continuing the development of a culture of service here at the Peralta District. We also had last week, actually, training for our administrators in what is known as the Oz Principle. Oz being from the Wizard of Oz. And you recall, the Wizard of Oz had four characters. It had, what's her name, Dorothy? We had the Tin Man, we had the Scarecrow, and we had the Lion. Each one of them took the Yellow Brick Road, looking for the magic wizard who would give them what they wanted, or what they thought they wanted, or what they needed. Dorothy wanted to go home, I think it was to Manhattan, not New York, Kansas. The Scarecrow, Scarecrow.
The Bronx.
Huh?
The Bronx.
Scarecrow needed a brain. The Tin Man needed a heart. And then the Lion, you recall, needed courage. Well, in the end, the most courageous was the Lion. Bear with me on this one, huh? The Thin Man, or Tin Man, was the one with the biggest heart. They had to oil him all the time. And then the Scarecrow was the smartest because he knew the strategies to move forward. In the end, they found a wizard who was behind a curtain pulling strings. And what everyone realized, that change was within yourself. And the accountability training that we had last week talked about each one of us taking the responsibility to be accountable for what we do and what our jobs are, being what we call above the line, which is to see it, to own it, to solve it, and to do it. So that's the end of my little lecture for this evening. Also in this evening's report, I want to invite Dr. Debbie Budd to do a special presentation for an extraordinary student coming out of BCC.
And if it's okay, Chancellor, I'd like to invite our trustee, Galasa, you, Victor Flint, and our special guest. So Tenzin Selden, would you please come up and join us? As we are sharing good news, we wanted to make sure to share the incredible news of one of our students that has attended Berkeley City College. And we have a resolution. We've actually had it last year, but she was gone in Oxford, and this is her first trip back. So come up so everyone can see you as we read. Isn't that lovely? So here we have Tenzin Selden. Whereas, Tenzin Selden is a former student ambassador for Berkeley City College, where she performed her duties in a superior manner, and she received a full two-year scholarship to Stanford University, won two national awards, won the Truman Award, the highest award for a college junior, and in her senior year at Stanford, she was awarded a three-year Rhodes Scholarship to Oxford University. And she's returning for her second year. Congratulations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees honors Tenzin Selden upon her many academic achievements. Congratulations. Can you stand for a picture? Yep. Congratulations. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Should I say it over there?
Yeah. Okay.
I want to remind everyone here that this extraordinary arc of achievement began right here in the Peralta District.
It did. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I would first like to thank Dr. Debbie Budd for that honor of introducing me and presenting this. I would also like to thank the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Dr. Ortiz, and also respective college presidents of the Peralta Community College System. And I would like to, this is quite overwhelming for me because it's my first time being back in California after a whirlwind of a year. And to be back here and to see some familiar faces and some new faces has been overwhelming, but definitely reminded of my roots every time I come back here. First of all, I want to start off by talking about my plight here. I was an asylum seeker from India and was granted refugee status in America when I was an adolescent and a teenager. And I owe it to the American educational system, and ultimately, I am a product, I am a Rhodes Scholar today as a result of the Peralta Community College System, as a result of Berkeley City College. Berkeley City College was my first introduction to higher-level college in America and higher-level education in America. It was where I set my foundation of growth and learning, and I am deeply, deeply grateful for that. At Berkeley City College, I was able to connect to a young group of student leaders who were as thoughtful and as ambitious in achieving to fight for an equitable world. Together with people like Esteem Brumfield, we worked intimately and passionately on issues ranging from immigration, education, and political agency. We made sure that our voice was heard even when Peralta was going through some of its most difficult financial circumstances. And to that, I am incredibly grateful. Through programs like the Student Government, ASBCC, and most importantly, the Student Ambassadors Program, I was able to find my voice. It was people like Victor Flint who told me, when I was applying to Stanford University, and not a single person I knew had gotten into Stanford, and I was aware that the admissions rate for transfer was 1%. It's quite daunting, 1%. It was people like Victor Flint who sat me in his office and told me, "Tenzin, you can do it. I see in you the future. I see it in your eyes." And I seized that opportunity to become one of the first individuals to transfer to Stanford, and I have encouraged every single one of my friends from the community college to do the same as well. It was programs like the Student Ambassadors Program that gave me a vehicle to speak and that also introduced me to a variety of group of people that I had never been exposed to growing up in the hilltops of the Himalayas. I was a girl who had no introduction to the life in the West and someone who had to learn what cultural assimilation meant from day one when I first entered this country. I also want to give credit to the faculty and group of professors and administrators and programs like the EOPS Program, the PACE Program, that allowed for a young girl who was working a full-time job and trying to be a leader in the community, a chance to go to school. Thank you for enabling me, and it was because of that enabling that at Stanford University, I was able to thrive, and I was able to show Stanford that seeds of leadership can begin from community college students. Today, I stand before you, having completed my first year at Oxford University in comparative social policy. And I have been also accepted into few PhD programs and will likely be finishing my DPhil at Oxford as well. And finally, a few weeks after California, I will be going to Israel and working on the Palestinian-Israel peace negotiations, a rare opportunity that I have been given. And it is because of the opportunity and because of the deep roots in my community college where I was able to cultivate myself as a leader, that I am now able to serve as a delegate for the peace negotiations. So I thank all of you for these opportunities. I thank Victor Flint especially for giving me a voice to speak. And I also hope and wish that every single one of you will support students so that they can enable and realize their most fullest potential. Thank you.
Trustee Galasa, we also have this evening a presentation on the budget, but I'll forego that until after board reports.
Thank you, Chancellor. And we will move to reports from the trustees, and we'll begin with student trustees, trustee Clegg, and then trustee Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President, trustee. On August 6th through the 9th, the Peralta Student Council hosted their first annual training for Alameda, Berkeley City College, Laney, Merit Student Body Government Council. We had a large turnout, and we had powerful presenters that came and presented, the administrator, the executives, the classified, the faculty. We were, appreciate all of those that were able to come and give your time to the students. They took a lot away, they took a lot with them from that training. They are still talking about it today. On August 16th, I attended the Community College Lead Trustee Workshop and where I received a certificate of completion for 2013. On August 26th through 13th, there's been students working with the IT department for the bundle testing for the People's Soft Software that they are implementing in the in the spring. On this Thursday, September 12th, we would like to invite all of you to our Student Council meeting at Laney College on the fourth floor in the Student Conference Room. At 4 o'clock, our chancellor will come and address the students. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Lee.
Good evening. I just went to the playbook corporations and talk about for service some community college college. I want to ask them to open more resource for us and maybe to open the door and create a way to help us about the Peralta Foundation. And I get the basics, the previous agreement with the director over there, so I'm working on it. And I hope maybe in soon or couple months, I have a, I can bring back the good news. And that's what I report.
Thank you. Trustee Nikki.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody, to the fall quarter. Two things that I'd like to just mention, you know, most of you know I'm a community college teacher myself, and I'm excited that my classes will be starting in two weeks. Got an amazing group of teaching assistants I'm working with down there, and I've been prepping all summer for classes, and I'm starting a class on social movements and grassroots organizing. So that's a special treat for me. And secondly, I think a lot of you know that there are a lot of community college faculty members in the state. In fact, there are 50,000 community college faculty members in the state, and I am honored recently to be invited to join the Membership Committee of FAC, the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges. So I'm going to be doing a little more traveling in the state, working with community college faculty members to exercise our political muscle. So we'll see where we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go all the way down to trustee Brown.
Welcome back, everyone. For my report, I can talk about some things, some exciting things that are happening. We'll have a little bit more time to talk about those. It's item 14 on our agenda, but we've been planning this amazing event that shows the deep political and cultural and social impact that the Peralta community and the Alameda County community has had on the American justice system, reviewing the trials of Huey P. Newton and Angela Davis, and there'll also be the O.J. Simpson trial, all debated by prominent legal minds in Alameda County, to discuss which would be the trial of the century. And as we'll discuss a little bit later, one of the most amazing things about the Huey P. Newton trial was it's the first time that we had an African-American jury foreman and that the type of impact that the trial had in, from an Alameda County judge finding that race was an unconstitutional reason to exclude someone for the jury. If you look at the impact of the Huey P. Newton trial and then you look at the George Zimmerman trial, you see that when the American justice system works, it has a very strong impact in our society. And it's wonderful that these, this history and this, the lessons that were learned from that jury and the impact that it had on the American jurisprudence system is something that has come out of Alameda County and has ties to Peralta. So we'll talk about that a little later, but we've been working with Dr. Ambreeze Galvez and Dr. Webb and Chancellor Ortiz have all been extremely supportive, and trustee Handy and our Board of Trustees and just the Peralta community, Jeff Hayman. Everyone has pitched in, rolled up their sleeves, as Peralta does, to plan this event that will be happening on October 9th. And so that's one of the things that we've been working on over the summer, and also I had the honor of attending the Oakland Natives Give Back Back to School Rally with our executive director of the Peralta Foundation to encourage students not just to go back to school in their K-12 education, but to make a pledge to continue their education through Peralta. And it was great to see people fired up and engaged in pursuing their education and wanting to look at Peralta as an option. So it's been a, it's been an exciting summer, and we look forward to the fall. So it's been a, it's been an exciting summer and we look forward to the fall.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Next week, we, I, a few trustees and some student leaders will be attending the Annual Legislative Caucus, known as Congressional Black Caucus, in Washington, DC. For the past, I would say, eight or nine years, we have tried to take a delegation of students, Esteem Brumfield was one of our students as well. It is such an incredible experience for the students. The cost for these trips are usually covered by money that's been raised. We've had incredible donations from vendors. We've had incredible financial support from college presidents and, and just people who really want to support the event. When our students are there, they get an opportunity to meet with lobbyists. They also get an opportunity to attend a legislative breakfast as a guest, a constituents' breakfast as a guest of Congresswoman Barbara Lee. They've had the opportunity to, I even have a picture of our junior student trustee getting a kiss from Nancy Pelosi after presenting her with an alumni sweatshirt from Peralta Colleges. So many of our students have had such incredible experiences there. Many of them have gone on to UC Berkeley, working, there are students who come back to us and talk about having gone there five and six years ago. Their lives are forever changed. And I have to thank all of you who have supported financially or helped the students or encouraged the students to participate in this event. And also to let you know that it is an event that comes out of individual pockets. We don't have institutional funding for that. So if anyone cares to help to support the student going to the caucus, you can either talk to me or you can talk to Romeo Garcia at the foundation. And if any of you have any questions, there's actually a video that was done where the students who went last year were interviewed and it was an incredible piece. In fact, it was so incredible that Congresswoman Barbara Lee asked for it so that she could show it to her congressional members because they, it's their hopes that other delegations will come. But so far, Peralta Community College was the first to bring student delegations and now San Francisco City College is starting to bring students and Contra Costa kind of missed the deadline, but they are hoping to try and join in on this again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Just to notice that on September 28th, at the Oracle Arena, Peralta will be a co-sponsor in Put Your Foot First. This is 17 annual back-to-school shoe giveaway. And through Jeff Hayman's office, I think led by Dr. J. Kitchen is going to be, we're, we are a bronze sponsor. So basically, Put Your Best Foot For It is a free event to provide new shoes to K-12 grade students across Alameda County. So we know that many of these students' parents attend our schools, so we look forward to this event. And those who would like to come out and participate feel welcome. So that is, that program is Put Your Best Foot For It on September 28th at Oakland Coliseum and that's from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. President, just briefly, I was recently mining the California Community College website because, you know, that's what I do as a trustee and came across some information specific to East Bay and looked at the number of jobs available, the number of positions that have been posted in various websites, aggregate websites. And it's through the community colleges' Office of Workforce Development. One of the things that I noticed on there is that the highest need of the type of a profession that we can, we certainly play a part of is, is in terms of the need for registered nurses. We have a very good nursing program here, we have in the past. I know it's small, but there is about 946 job openings currently listed for the East Bay for the registered nursing program. Software developers, about 915. Sales reps, 816. Computer programmers, 749. Information technology project managers, 621. I'm not sure if that includes Peralta or not. Office clerks, 555. Admins and so on and so on. That said, I just want to make sure that our programs and our course offerings here at the Peralta Colleges are actually in line and we're actively having conversations with industry to meet those workforce demand needs. We've done a good job, for example, our nursing program to have our nurses staff up at Kaiser and Children's Hospital and other places, but I want to make sure that it continues. We haven't had a report of the nursing program in some time and I'm hoping that's something that might be of interest, not only for nursing, but all our allied health program because that seems to be the big area where there seems to be a lot of growth for our, for our community. And that's all I have to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Yan. I just have a few comments to make. First of all, Tenzin, thank you for coming here tonight. You're a brilliant inspiration. It reminds us of the importance we do, of the things that we do and reminds us also of the inspiration when you return and tell us of your achievements, what an inspiration that is to us. We double our energies and I want to thank Victor and Esteem Swell for their great contributions to the district. I also want to say hello or good night to my grandchildren. They're visiting from Vienna, Austria, and they're probably up past their bedtime, but Vio and Maxie, I want you to pay attention, you know, yesterday I read you a kid's story and then I pointed out some of the principles in that story, why the characters were behaving as they were and what you can learn from that. And I'm deeply, deeply happy to notice that the chancellor has done the same thing to his staff and has pointed out the basic principles involved in the children's story there for the education of all. And even I learned something from that and I will talk to them about it.
We never outgrow it, you know.
Off to bed, kids. And then lastly, I want to congratulate everybody here, the staff and all the faculty and all the trustees who worked so hard to put this district back on good even keel, both with the accreditation commission, but equally important in terms of finances. And the announcement later tonight that we're adding another 20 faculty for 40 new faculty, these are full-timers. What a thrill it is to see the district repairing itself and returning to fulfilling its mission. So I thank, I thank all of you for your hard work. And with that, I think we go, I'm sorry, I believe it's time for the public hearing. And with that, I believe Ron, you're on board. And what we're going to do is gavel in. I don't have a gavel handy, but officially, I'm gavelling in a meeting. It's a public hearing and an action item. It's a conduct of the, I'm sorry, am I jumping the gun or is there something else?
No.
No, that's what I understood the chancellor to say. So we're going to gavel in the meeting and then the vice chancellor will describe the budget report and then there'll be opportunity for comments from the public.
Pleasure to be before you again. I hope you enjoyed this time off and it was restful and relaxing. Coming back, deeply immerse you in budget and numbers. I apologize for that, but it is that time of year again. So on this evening's agenda is to present to you for your review and consideration the district's 2013-14 fiscal year proposed final budget. This budget that is being presented to you this evening has been developed and is being presented in accordance with Education Code 58305, which requires that the Board of Trustees receive and approve a final budget on or before September 15th. It has also been prepared in accordance with applicable board policies and administrative procedures, namely Board Policy 6200, Budget Preparation and Administrative Procedure 6200, Budget Management. Behind the scenes on this, this, pretty proud of this budget. It's really the culmination of a lot of effort and work across the district and through the shared governance committees over the last, over nine months. And it's the document that you see before you tonight, which represents our roadmap and our structure, fiscal structure going forward for this operational cycle, this fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, 2014. To make it a little different from the past, in the event that you, you've grown tired of seeing me, we've asked our budget director, Susan Rennie, who's been with us for the better part of three years, to co-present and provide you with a summary and the highlights of the budget. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Susan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Board President, Board members and Chancellor. And it's my pleasure to present to you some good news for a change in a budget document. That's what I kind of relate it to is, you know, the bearer of bad news, the bearer of good news. So hopefully, I'll be presenting in the future. I'm presenting to you, as Vice Chancellor Gerhart stated, today's 2013-14, our final budget. Your tentative budget was presented to you a few months ago. Since then, we have actually, the, the state has signed a budget and we have a state budget. And so what I'll be doing is highlighting some of the state budget, things that were signed over in the state budget. Then we'll be going over how those, that budget actually trickles down to us and how we've implemented and applied that to our budget, our final budget. We're going to go over two of the major funds, the Restricted General Fund and the Parcel Tax Fund. All of the other funds are in your, in your document. However, if there is time, I will kind of highlight some of the Measure A funds also. And then the 2013-14 budget model allocation, so I'm going to summarize that as to where we are with that. So to start us off, on the state budget, this is the third consecutive year that we've actually had a state budget that has been passed on time. And in relation to that, it's the fourth consecutive year that we've had a budget for Peralta on time. So we're one year ahead of the state. Our on-time budgets correlate directly with the hiring of Vice Chancellor Gerhart. So give credit where credit is due.
That's going to cost me.
We, the state budget also includes a reserve this year of $1.1 billion, which is greater than past years. As you recall, or may not recall, in the tentative budget, the governor had some very conservative revenues that he had forecasted. He maintained that level of revenues for the final budget this year for the state. They, the Legislative Analyst Office has said that those are very low estimates and that they project that there would be actually about $2.8 billion more in the revenues than what's in the current budget that was adopted by the state. So the other great thing that's happened in the state budget is there was progress made on our deferrals. As you know, that they have deferred money from one year to the next for us, which has challenged some cash flow issues and put us out to, we had to issue trillions, tax revenue anticipation notes in order to make our cash flows and things like that. And so this is helping us by buying that down. For community colleges directly, this year, instead of growth funding, what they're referring to is access funding. That's how they're referring to it. Because they're not really giving us growth money, they're giving our students access to courses and to dollars that were not available in the past. So in past years, when they actually funded this, they called it growth. This year, they're calling it access. So what they're really doing is giving additional access to students. And it's about $89 million, which is about 1.63% of the total budget increase. There are also, this is another term that we've spelled out because we haven't had it in so long, cost of living adjustment, COLA, of about $87.5 million. And that's about 1.57%. And it's the first COLA has been pointed out since '07, '08. In addition, a few years ago, they also not only hit the general fund unrestricted, but they also took funds from our specialized programs, our DSPS, our EOPS, our CAL Works and other categorically funded grants. And so what they've done this year is they've increased it by 88 million. 50 million of it is going to what used to be called matriculation and now they call it Students Success and Support Program. You'll hear it referred to as Triple SP, Students Success, all different, but basically it's the, it replaces the matriculation programs. And then they gave 15 million for DSPS, our special, what is that called? Distable student programs. And 15 million for EOPS and 8 million for CAL Works. So they're starting to restore what they took away from those programs also. Another new item that they brought forward is, or restored, is the $30 million of deferred maintenance and instructional materials. For those of you who were around, a few years ago, we actually received these dollars and then they stopped them. And so now they're reinstating it. They're saying it's one time and it's $30 million statewide. And there's two additional new programs that they are, that the budget includes and it's a 25 millions for Adult Education Local Planning Grants. If you recall, the governor in his original proposal said, "We're going to take the adult education programs from the K-12 arena and move it into the community college." Now he's allocated money to say, "Form a partnership with your community colleges and K-12s and develop a project, a program that works best for those, those students in that arena." And we'll issue, there's $25 million available for, for us to do that. Then the final one is the new online education incentive. It's about $16.9 million. And the way it was explained on this one was, it's not for us to develop an online program where we're going to actually have students from LA County or other counties use our program. It was more for the students who need that one class that's not offered for another two or three semesters because of limitations, to get that class online and to stay on track with their, their educational program. And so he had, there's $16.9 million in that. And then the final one is the Prop 39 Sustainability Projects, which, and there's about 47 million in that. And this says what the state budget does not include, and you may be looking at that and going, "Well, why is it a smiley face if it doesn't include it?" The first one is trigger language. There is no, no trigger language in this budget. So no mid-year cuts, no, "Well, if this proposition doesn't pass, we're going to take this money away." There's nothing of that nature. There's no mid-year borrowing. So the, the governor is not coming to us and saying, "Well, in January, we're not going to pay you what we owe you. We'll pay it next July, August or September." And there's no workload reduction. So once again, they're giving us that access money, growth money, in place of taking away where they have in the past. However, we do still have some concerns in the community college arena. The EPA, the Prop 9, Prop 30 money, the education protection, what's the issue?
Act.
Act. EPA. Those funds are based on a short-term proposition. It ends, but as you can read here, the sales tax ends in the year 2016 and the income tax increase ends in the 2018. So will it be extended? How will we recoup those monies in those years when those actually are eliminated or come to an end? Then on the same note, our apportionment is getting more and more complicated. It used to be that one-third of our Budget Act was, or of our budget, was dependent on Budget Act probabilities and two-thirds was based on the governor signing the budget and saying, "This is how much you're going to get." Now it's kind of flipped because two-thirds of our budget is based on the EPA and the sales tax and all of these other variables that can happen and only one-third is actually based on when the governor signs the budget. So that's a concern that we have at the community college level. So we'll look at this and we'll say, "Well, how does all this affect ours, PCCD? How do, what do we gain and what have we gained from this?" Our access funds of what we've actually received, about $1.9 million. So we are able to increase, they've increased our funding to the tune of 410 FTS, Full-Time Equivalent Students. The cost of living adjustment, COLA, COLA, is about $1.5 million. get the allocation for EOPNS, and it was right around $400,000 increase from prior year. The other two, we haven't, the SSSP and the DSPS, we have not received the allocations from the state yet. And then the one-time deferred maintenance and instructional materials, we actually received $225,000 each on that. So those are new monies that we're bringing into the, into the budget. Additional information that was used to build the budget, we actually, all of the assumptions are laid out on page 11 of the budget book, but I just kind of wanted to hit on a couple of them. The FTEs targets, our target this year is 18,830 students. We will be funded from the state for 18,556. So our target is always around 300 more than our actual funding level. We built the budget with a productivity level of 17.5. And as stated earlier, we have additional positions put into the budget. There are 20 full-time faculty positions and 15 classified positions. We used unrestricted lottery dollars of $124.25. And then we also did a general apportionment deficit factor of 2% for the uncertainties. So if we put that all together, you'll look at, you'll see that our revenue total for this year is 119,601,000. And our expenses balance that. So we do have a balanced budget. And this is on page 17 of the budget books, for those that. So this is our General Fund unrestricted. And looking at that, you can see on that page, there's also, for those that are graphic, they have the little chart that shows how much of it broken out by percentages on the pie chart. But you'll see that we've maintained the same level of instructional and non-instructional expenditures as we've had in previous years. In addition, we have the parcel tax, as we all know, was passed, and this is our second year with the parcel tax. The parcel tax was not only, is not only used for 40% of our adjunct faculty, but it's also used to, was also used to restore the part of the 15% site discretionary budgets that were cut in prior years. So that's why you see some books and supplies and equipment and capital outlay under this object code, or, excuse me, this fund. So that brings us to the budget allocation model. And back in August of 2010, the Budget and Planning Council worked on the creation of the budget allocation model. And since then, we have been using the budget allocation model to try and, to try and allocate the new, all of the new funds and all of the new positions based on the needs of the FTEs that are, that are actually produced by that site. So it takes like the three-year rolling average of each of the sites and says, "How much of that is, does that site generate based on a computation of revenue?" And then we say, "How much actually we do in expenditures?" And so we've done this for, since 2011, '12, '13, and now '13, '14. And we're finding that, based on the core principles, it provides a financial stability for each of the colleges. It's consistent with the state's SB 361 funding model, and you can read the other five. But there, it's, it's vented in shared governance, it's vented in the Budget and Planning Council. And so everyone understands why the funds are allocated the way they're allocated. And I think it's proved to be a very prudent budget allocation model that we use. So based on that, you can see that the three-year rolling averages are in the middle of the page here. And you can see that Alameda's three-year average, they generate about 19.3%, 36% of our FTEs over the last three years. Their average is about 19.3%. And you can read across Berkeley, 19.5, 40.6. So if we look at the percent that they actually generate in FTEs, and we compare that to, we apply that to the revenue, you can see downward, it says net revenue allocated, allocation by college. For College of Alameda is 15,887,000. That's how much revenue is generated by that rolling average. Then if you go down below, where it says total expenditure, 16,232,000, the second to the last line on the page, you'll see that when we did the budget, or when we actually allocated out the funds for FTE and staff and everything, that is how much they actually have in the system. So their overall, not, currently, they have $345,242 in, not, I don't want to say in excess, but they have that money that was, that is being applied to help them achieve their goals, that is greater than the revenue that was generated by the 19.36 FTEs. So that's how that is calculated across the board. The total exclusions up on the top are basically our OPEB, are related to our OPEBs, the 17 million. So that's the budget allocation model. We're not completely there yet, but we're closer than we were two years ago when we started. And I think, the last thing that, I still have four minutes, should I go ahead with the Measure A? On the Measure A Bond Project, we, this year, it's on page, it begins on page 30 in your, I don't have a slide for it, but I wanted to express the way that we did the budget this year for the Measure A. Last year, there was great effort between DGS, District General Services, and the Finance Office in compiling and making sure that everything that was in the budget was actually what the board had authorized to be spent on the different projects through, through the bond funds. And so this year, what we've done is, we've maintained the spreadsheet throughout the year last year, and we loaded the budget this year. We loaded it with the balances that were available to be spent on the projects that you had authorized them to be spent on. And so the reflection of the Measure A budget that's in there this year actually is a true reflection of where we stand on the project. So the full budget has been loaded for those projects that are left. So at any time, you can go in and look at a project and say, "This is how much was budgeted, this is how much has been spent, and this is where we are in that project." So once again, I think that with the leadership of Vice Chancellor Ikaro and Vice Chancellor Gerhart, together, we've come together and we've built it so that everyone is on the same page, and we are all working together on making sure that the reports and everything are autonomous between the two of us. So, okay? So that's my presentation. Are there any questions?
Trustee.
Yeah. Thank you so much for presenting a balanced budget to the board with the, with the reserve here, and also with the fact that we're actually adding positions, positions that have been cut. I wanted to get a sense, it's not clear from, from my reading of the budget. I have two questions. One is, what types of classified positions are actually being added into the budget? I'd like to get a sense of that.
Okay.
And one of the things that we keep on hearing is, one of the things that I keep on hearing is the need for us to do a better job of actually providing support services for our students so they can succeed. That's one question. And the second question is, I know we're setting aside about $17 million for the OPEB liability. What's the basis for that $17 million? And is that enough money to be set aside in this year's budget for that purpose?
You want me to, or you want to?
You can have the first one and the second one.
Okay. As far as the classified positions, the 20 positions, and please chime in if I may speak here, please. Six of the positions were for grounds and maintenance, which are district-wide. So there, there were actually positions that were restored from previous year reductions. And the other positions were split based on the percent of FTEs, the percentage totals, within the other, within all the other colleges. And those colleges had, and each of the presidents had, at their sites, they had meetings and they, through shared governance, and they prioritized their highest need for what their clerical or staff, staffing needs were for the classified, and those are the ones that they funded with those, with those positions.
So for example, four, four of the remaining were for instructional aids, one at each college. And in addition to that, there was one classified position here at the District Educational Services that helps with distance ed and distance learning and ed services. So it was, it was quite a, quite a broad mix in terms of the classified positions.
How does that number relate to the number of, have all the positions then fully been restored from last year's budget? Or how much closer are we to restoring the positions that we had cut in, let's say, two years ago?
Well, I don't have numbers off the top of my head. But the, quite a ways. I'll, I'll put it that way, in technical terms. I may recall in 2000, I believe, at 2011, we did a supplemental early retirement plan. During that, during that effort alone, we had over 50 retirees. So between the 41 faculty positions over the last two years, the 21 plus this 20, and these, these classified positions, that only represents, you know, maybe half, approximately half of that one year alone. So we're still quite a ways, and, you know, we're, we're still restoring as the state is restoring. To get to your second question on the 17, on the OPEB, just to make sure that's not lost.
Can we just, still stay on the first question for a second?
Okay.
One of the items that I keep hearing from the chancellor is customer service, customer service. And I know members from the public, sometimes, you know, we don't have receptionists at the districts or at the colleges, per se. I don't know that we do, but I know that people get lost in mazes when they can't access computers and need information. Are there any sort of front-level positions that are reflected in this budget where, you know, people can call and get answers, questions answered? Probably not.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
One that, in particular, that I'm aware of at Mary College, one of their, one of their positions was a switchboard operator, if they still have those. But yes, there are positions like that, and that being one example.
Thank you.
Second question?
Yeah.
Okay. The 17 million is comprised of two, two distinct pieces. The first of them is the money set aside to fund benefits for current employees, the OPEB liability. That's, that's approximately $7 million. The $10 million difference is for current retirees who were paying their medical bills on today. So there's two components. Number one is the current employees and the amounts being set aside for them, which is the 7 million. And then the larger piece of that, the 10 million, is for current retirees who we're paying for.
So can you speak of that $17 million in relation to our OPEB investment returns?
Actually, our OPEB returns over the last year have been, done really well, or relatively well. On an annualized basis, our return on our portfolio, which is approximately $195 million, has been a little above, above 12%. So we've, we've done pretty well compared to our benchmarks. And actually, at our next, at our, at our October Board of Trustees meeting, you will receive the quarterly update of the Retirement Board and the OPEB, the OPEB investment portfolio.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all my questions, I compliment you, Chancellor Gerhart, Vice Chancellor Gerhart, and your staff on putting together an excellent, very transparent, and very easy to understand budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from trustees? We take comments from the public at this point. And seeing no comments from the public, we will close the official public hearing. And then now, at this point, we ask the board to approve Resolution Number 13/1416 for adoption.
I move approval, Mr. President, of Resolution 1314-16, the 2013-14 final budget for the Peralta Colleges.
I'll second it.
And I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? It carries unanimously. Thank you.
I agree.
And now we come to item number six, a District Academic Senate Report. And President Dr. Carolyn Van Putten.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. Last week, when our paths crossed, Trustee Withrow asked me to give him a read on the faculty mood in this new academic year, AY 2013-14, an inquiry that I deeply appreciate coming from the Board of Trustees. While I certainly make it a practice to keep my ear to the ground as it pertains to faculty concerns and struggles, it may well be too soon to provide an informed answer to Trustee Withrow's inquiry. However, because I am now actively teaching in the classroom for the first time in almost six years, I am more keenly aware of some of the systemic issues that have an immediate and will likely have a future impact on the Peralta faculty mood. Some of these issues are external pressures and some of them are internal. With respect to the former, in my view, it is very important to stay informed about the growing number of developments in the massive open online course, or MOOC arena. Practically every week, we hear news of the spread of MOOCs and their probable and increasing impact on community colleges. By definition, these courses require technology support and faculty skill with using them. MOOCs, one aspect of distance education, will threaten and have the potential to enliven how the Peralta Colleges support student success. Another external pressure that is likely to affect how we function is being monitored monthly in Bryan Alexander's Future Trends in Technology and Education Newsletter, available by subscription from his blog at a site that I'll be mentioning in the written version of this report. This pressure is most succinctly captured in a quote by a political science professor at Johns Hopkins University. Dr. Benjamin Ginsberg states, quote, "We are all aware that the ship of higher education is indeed taking on water and listing to port," end quote. Taking direction from that quotation, Mr. Alexander tracks what he refers to as "the higher education bubble," a concept that continues to develop over multiple fronts, which holds that colleges are overpriced, that student demand is questionable, and both could drop altogether. That's a quotation from Mr. Alexander. Alexander also notes Moody's warning that more college closings are likely following the end of one campus, St. Paul's College in Lawrenceville, Virginia, one of the historically black colleges and universities that was founded in 1888. Interest on student loan debt doubled this summer as a result of federal gridlock, and it is finally being widely reported that student debt falls most heavily on the poor with the determination that over half of all student debt is held by households whose net worth is under $8,500. As you probably know, student loan debt in America currently exceeds a trillion dollars. Only the aggregated debt of home mortgages is more than that. At the same time, quote, "Just over half of recent college graduates work in jobs where a college degree is not required." Moving to internal pressures, although we're not exactly experiencing a paucity of riches, somehow the phrase seems applicable. Now that Peralta is finally able to arrest years of budget cuts and understaffing, especially of full-time faculty members, we are faced with the inevitable situation of having too few faculty members to do the work associated with correcting the understaffing situation. This means that the pressure on faculty to do more than teach our classes, including the work of shared governance, of senate leadership, of extra service positions that can only be filled by faculty, and of serving on selection committees threatens to be overwhelming quickly. Inside the classroom, many faculty members remain disturbed about the lack of so-called smart classroom technology that is available to us and that we are trained to use effectively. Late to the game, to begin with, three of the Peralta Colleges, Berkeley City Colleges, the sole exception, are significantly under-resourced with the kind of technology that is increasingly required to support student engagement and success. It must be stated that we are moving much too slowly to correct this situation, in part due to funding gaps. This is a situation that urgently requires attention. We are hopeful that the recent inclusion of technology funding in the district's budget allocation model will help close this gap and eagerly await the chancellor's decision on how those funds will be allocated. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we move to the consent calendar. But before we do, I'm remiss, Trustee Withrow is ill this evening, and we had a phone chat just prior to the meeting, and he asked me during the public hearing of the, of the budget to ask, and not necessarily get answers right now, but something to look forward to in the, in the future. The complete breakdown of the new faculty versus part-time faculty, the ratio of full-time classes, classes taught by full-timers versus part-timers, and the relation of these ratios, et cetera, to state formulas, even though the formulas may not be enforced, it's just as a tool to understand where we are vis a vis established formulas in the past, which probably in the past, which probably will be revisiting in the near future. So I'm sorry for an interruption. Now we move to the consent calendar, and it's my understanding we have speakers on item nine, 10, and 22.
Yes, Mr. President, the first speaker is from, for item number nine and number 10, and the item number nine is consider approval of contract addendum for Chad Thompson from Merrick Colleges, Peralta Achievement Collaborative Department of Labor Project. And the speaker is Tim Bryce, Timothy Bryce. Is that the individual here? Mr. Bryce wanted to speak on both items number nine and number 10. Don't see him in the audience. We'll move to item number 22 if we can in interim, see if he gets back. Item number 22 is consider approval of annual PeopleSoft software license update and support with Oracle. The speaker is Matthew Goldstein.
So the board's been asked tonight for a quarter million dollars for Oracle upgrades, and it's a lot of money, and end users, that is faculty primarily, are pretty dissatisfied with the way PeopleSoft has been working. But I'm confident that V.C. Gerhart wouldn't be presenting the item if we didn't actually need these updates, and we certainly can't afford for PeopleSoft to get any worse. So it makes sense to go ahead and perform these upgrades. But still, there are a couple of fixes that I really hope will insist on if we, as I expect we will, go forward with this $250,000. And they're very straightforward, and they're fixes that we've been asking for, for a number of years. One is to make it possible for part-timers to know what their accrued sick leave is on their pay subs. And I understand it would require a bit of programming, but I would ask that we require that Oracle provide us with this small service in consideration for the quarter million dollars we're sending their way. Also, we've had this ongoing issue with the personnel office about the removal of our members from the membership roles. And it seems that anytime a PFT member changes status, say from a part-timer to a long-term sub, or from a full-timer to a part-timer in retirement, they get stripped of their membership, even if they've been paying dues for, in some cases, 40 years. So it looks like the default setting on PeopleSoft in the module, whatever it is, is non-member. So an easy fix would be to change that default to member. Again, we're finding that again and again and again, long time dues-paying members are converted to agency fee payers. So again, let's attach those little fixes to our request to, or our check to Oracle. And it seems to me that if Oracle can try to fix a boat race, they can probably try to fix a software program they're responsible for. So thanks very much.
Now, just as a reminder, we're going to move approval of the consent calendar items. The number seven and 14 have been pooled, 14 for discussion, and the seven for questions. And with those exceptions, is there a move to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstaining? Or nays? It's unanimous. And so we move to a discussion, to the action item, item number seven, and I believe, was that you?
That was. So this is an item that is a pretty routine matter.
Let me just read the item number seven, is consider approval of contracts for the production and printing of college brochures for Berkeley City College, College of Alameda, and Laney College.
Thank you.
So it's a pretty routine item, and I don't have any objection to the substance of it. My question has actually to do with the production of the printing, and I want to ensure that when we spend institutional funds, we're using union shops and we are making sure that we've got a union logo or a union bug on the printed material. And I don't know whether, in fact, this is board policy, but if it's not board policy, it probably should be board policy that print jobs over a certain dollar amount actually go to union shops. But, so, I don't know whether we need to amend this item to ensure that the print job is done at a union shop, or whether the administration can simply assure us that, in fact, that is the case. Do we know the answer to that question?
This, I think, Mr. President, if I may, this item is done retrospectively, I think we've already done this work. Is that correct? No?
These are brochures that are going to be produced and used over the next several years.
That's correct, trustee. I can check into it. You know...
The, can the question be directed to the chancellor?
Yes, and I defer to Jeff Hayman, who's been working on this project.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I will definitely check. We also make sure that we follow the policies on soy-based inks and that sort of thing. I don't know the specifics of this particular printer, but I'll check, and through the chancellor we'll get back to you.
Okay, well, if I could amend this item to require that print job be done at a union shop with a union logo or a union bug, if I could get a second, I would appreciate that. Well, we just don't know, and the administration has not provided us with assurance that it will be done, and so I just want to make sure that it will be done that way. I don't want to have them come back and then say, oh, well, yeah, you know, we didn't do that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second it for discussion purposes.
Second it. Discussion.
If I may. I would like for administration to, I wouldn't want us to debate this over the air about this and want to bring it back. I think this is something we could probably ask in advance before we get here. You know, but I mean, I don't disagree with your premise, I just don't think this is the time to debate it over the airwaves. And the chancellor's already said that they're going to look into it. Or I don't want to put words in your mouth, do I? I know we need courage.
All right, yes. I am happy to write a board policy that would direct the administration to make this, just make this a matter of procedure if we need such board policy.
Well, we're going to have a board presentation next week that we postponed last meeting on purchasing and the administrative procedures that address this very issue. With regards to the board's interest in hiring union shops, there are nuances to that. There's, and we'll talk about it next meeting, but we have administrative procedures that give preference to local businesses, that gives preference to small business, give preference, if we like, to union shops. But I think at this time, I'm not, I don't believe it's legal to just stamp union shops as preferred vendors. But we're going to bring that to the board next time with a further explanation of what that is about. And it has to do with contract and purchasing, public contract code.
I'm not sure that that actually, that the question of, I'm not sure that the question of long-term service contracts is the same question in relationship to print jobs. And it seems to me that the board could have a policy that required that large print jobs be done in union shops.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
I think this is why we get our agendas early, so that we can read through and we have questions. The issue at hand today is this particular contract. The issue of whether or not we should ask for union shops or whatever is an issue for discussion that should be agendized and should take place, but it should not be played out right here. Because that is not the issue. The issue is whether or not we're awarding the contract. You're adding another caveat to that contract, which was not part of, we have no idea. I mean, I don't know why you would even think that it wasn't going to be a union shop or whatever, but that's not the issue. So do you want to hold up a small, local minority business contract for something that was not required of them before? Or do we want to be responsible and ask those questions, but agendize this for a discussion? And if it's going to be a policy, that would need to be a consensus, so it definitely would have to be a discussion. I just don't think that we should be playing these things out in the court of public opinion. I think we should follow policies and do this the way, do this correctly.
Thank you.
I have no objections to it being union shop or not. All of my print materials are union shop, but I just don't think that this is the place for that discussion.
Mr. President, I've brought up this issue in the past with some of our other printed materials, not noticing the fact that we were using recycled materials, or the fact that we were using union shops. And there's some rationale, I guess, to that, to that logic. I'm not sure that the whole board has had that explanation. But that said, I think that we ought to move towards giving some sort of credit for vendors, whatever. Currently, I don't think they get extra points if they're a union shop. I think that only falls to another designation. But I think this policy needs to be discussed, and I think we have scheduled a workshop around that purpose at the next meeting. Unfortunately, it's been punted twice because of other issues. I think I would ask that we either pull this item and table it for that discussion, or if we want to wait for that discussion. I don't know if this is time-sensitive or not, so I certainly would like to ask that question.
We'll ask that question of the chancellor. Is this a time-sensitive issue?
No, it is not time-sensitive.
That would probably be up to the vendor to determine whether it's time-sensitive or not. I mean, this is why we get our packets ahead of time. It is our responsibility to read through, if we have any questions like this, to bring them to the board president or to the chancellor to have those questions answered.
Yeah, I support. I support trustee Handy's position. I think we need to move this item.
All right, trustee Handy, it's not a motion itself, there is a motion on the floor at the moment, which is consider approval of the contracts with the caveat that they, I believe you, a mandate, if you would like, that it be a union shop. Is that in sense?
That is, and if I could, please. I did ask this question prior to the beginning of the board meeting. The answer was not forthcoming, and the reason that I'm concerned about it is that the answer was not forthcoming. That the, that the question had not been obvious, and that the answer was not obvious tells me that, in fact, this needs to be part of the deliberation of the board. I don't think that, in fact, raising it at this point is late. In fact, I think raising it at this point is quite timely. This is when it came to us. I've been asking questions about union labor for months and months and months, and here we are yet again. This, in fact, is a brochure that will be used over the next several years. So whether we delay this particular vote for two weeks or not, I think that's what it means when we say this isn't time-sensitive, that for our needs internally as a district, two weeks is not going to make or break this project.
All right, I want to remind everyone, there is the motion on the floor, and it contains the direct mandate that we actually use a union shop. Are you ready? May I call the question on that? All you have to do is vote it down. Yes, that's exactly what we're seeking here. And then we can make a counterproposal to defer or whatever you prefer. So all those in favor of the motion to mandate a union shop for this particular purchase?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. President.
Roll call.
Mr. President, may I address with the chancellor's permission regarding the vote? I just want to be clear. The vote is not to postpone the item for next board meeting. Instead, the vote is only to approve it if it is union shop. Is that correct?
Yes.
I highly advise that that not be a vote, consideration for the board. The message is essentially that unless you are a union shop, you cannot work, be a vendor at Peralta. With regards to this particular vendor, there are some legal issues in terms of right to work. I highly recommend that you either postpone the vote and move it to the next board meeting so that you take it from a larger picture, or simply vote and say, if this vendor is a union shop vendor, then the materials will state so. And if it's not, then so be it, but we'll take a look at it from a public policy, bigger picture level.
Well, I would ask then trustee Gonzalez Yan if he would retract the original motion.
I would be happy to withdraw the entire motion and ask that this item be carried over to the next meeting.
Okay, there is a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. The motion, again, is to carry this item over to the next meeting after there's been a discussion of the pros and cons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition. May I see if I can, I'm sorry, trustee Brown?
I oppose.
Trustee is, there are, is it three of the three? I believe it's...
So there was a previous motion. Did we withdraw that motion?
We withdrew that motion.
Did you withdraw? Your second?
My second?
Yeah.
No, I did not.
Okay.
Trustee Yuan made the motion that I had stated earlier.
All you have to do with balance.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. motion.
Which is the original motion. All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That was nine.
So what's the vote?
Five, one. I don't know. It's five, it's five, what?
Four, two.
Oh, oh.
It's four, two. I can count them.
Why don't we have a roll call, then we can resolve this? Thank you.
It's to approve the motion as it's originally stood prior to this discussion. And we have the motion on the second, and now we proceed to a roll call. Nikki?
No.
Si? Yes.
Yes.
Somebody's got to call him.
Student trustee Kleg?
Yes.
Student trustee Wiley?
Yes.
Trustee Yuan?
No.
Trustee Galasa?
Yes.
Trustee Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one.
Okay, thank you. And now we move to the second item that has been pulled, and that's item number 14, I believe it was. And before we begin the discussion, I want to call attention to the fifth paragraph of that. It's just a small technical problem. It says, whereas a VIP reception where alcohol will be served will be held at the Laney Bistro, the phrase where alcohol will be served should be stricken. Originally, there was an understanding that the board of trustees, and that was part of the reason for this proposal, that required the trustees to vote approval of, at any time that we use alcohol in an event. The act, the past practice and the, is that the chancellor has the authority to authorize the usage when it's appropriate. So with that, just the removal of those three words, everything else stands. And with that, I turn it over to trustee Brown.
Thank you, trustee Galasa. We had, I had mentioned briefly about the Trial of the Century project at the outset of the, during the board presentation at the outset of the meeting. And just to recap, on October 9th, from 6:30, or 6 to 7, 6 to 9, actually, we're going to have a debate on what trial would be considered the Trial of the Century. The basic premise is to review the Huey P. Newton trial because of its impact on the American jurisprudence system. And it's important to know that it's the way that the jury was selected in that trial and the way that an Alameda County judge had ruled regarding the constitutionality of using race as a preemptive factor for the composition of the jury. the jury was landmark, and the, that trial is used to train lawyers and judges across the country, and it was, this decision was made by an Alameda County judge years before the Supreme Court ruled on the issue. So, it's a historic moment for Alameda County, and of course, because the Black Panthers have a history in, with Merritt College, there is a very important roots and origin for Peralta, and to have major legal minds come back to Laney College at the Odell Johnson Auditorium and debate the Trial of the Century is a phenomenal opportunity for us. We'll have Howard Moore, who was the defense attorney on the Angela Davis trial, and Doran Weinberg, who's one of the lawyers on the Huey P. Newton defense team, and there'll also be John Burris, who is a local attorney with national prominence, who will talk about the O.J. Simpson trial, which he provided TV analysis during that trial. And the purpose of this event is not only community education and a community event, but it's also to raise money for a film on the Huey P. Newton trial by Arc of Justice Productions. It's a documentary film that will be used for educational purposes, and then also the Restorative Justice for Youth, which is a program that Fania Davis runs to help children who, young people, children who are affected by violence heal themselves and gain new ways to cope with conflict. And one of the really great parts about this event is that at Merritt College, there will be a lecture specifically for students, an academic program that will be offered at Merritt College for students, in addition to the debate, which is open to the public. And the Laney Bistro will be the site of the VIP reception, and we're having the Laney College Culinary Program handle the catering. So, it's an all-star cast from Peralta, and it's an exciting event because the talent and the scope of the ability in the, in Peralta is so magnificent, and we're having an opportunity to showcase a broad spectrum of that talent at this event. And we're, the publicity is being handled by Jeff Hayman. The event will be taped by Peralta TV, and Jim Brosnahan, who's nationally recognized as one of the leading trial lawyers in the country, who lives in Berkeley, is going to be the moderator for this event. So, it's, our hometown team is pretty spectacular, and we're, we've had great participation from Peralta, and I invite everyone to come and enjoy this event, and that's October 9th, 6 to 9, at the Odell Johnson Performing Arts Theater, and then also at Merritt for the students and for the Peralta community, from 11 to 1, in the Huey P. Newton Student Lounge. There'll be a lecture specifically for students and for their academic program.
Thank you very much. Now, we neglected to actually make a motion. Do you make a motion to?
I move to approve trustee's resolution, item number 14.
Second?
Consider approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and, thank you. That concludes the discussion on the items on the consent calendar and the action calendar. And at this, at this point, I have been informed that we need additional action on item number 25, which was on the consent calendar, and we voted for. This is an exception to the 180-day wait period government code, et cetera. It is, we're hiring a person back who's retired, I understand, and prior to the 188, 180-day period that you must wait before seeking work in the, similar to what you were doing when you retired. And what's required, this is on the consent calendar, what is required is a voice. We already approved it, but what's really required by law is a roll call.
Chair, I'll move, move approve of resolution 13 dash 14 dash 19.
Okay, we'll second it, and we'll move now to a.
Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Please.
Student trustee Clegg.
Isn't that Brenda?
The board clerk has asked me to do it on her behalf. Student trustee Clegg.
Heard a request for the motion to be restated, what the 180-day period, what the impact of it is, and then to have a motion restated.
The question before the board is to consider approval, exception to the 180-day request. I don't know if the administration wants to speak on it for clarification, in addition to what's on the agenda.
Yes. Thank you, trustee. Pursuant to government code, a retiree has to wait out 180 days after they retire before they can accept post-retirement with the CalPERS Agency, and there's a narrow exception to this rule, and before the board is the resolution required for the board to certify this exception, and so the board is required by law to take a vote on it, and it cannot be on the consent agenda. And so, this resolution is requesting the board to take action on this matter.
Thank you. Further explanations? All right, ready for the roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Clegg.
Yes.
Student trustee Lee. Trustee Gonzalez Yuan.
Yes.
Trustee Galasa.
Yes.
Trustee Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Riley.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Six.
Thank you. And with that, I believe the official business is at an end, and we have some comments.
A couple of announcements, Mr. President. For the good of the order, want to alert the public that the board meeting on October 22nd has been rescheduled to October 8th, and we have scheduled the board retreat meeting for October 15th from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That notification should be going out shortly. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be here at the district office on September 24th, and on behalf of the board, we'd like to congratulate Berkeley alumna, alumna Paige Birma, who won an Emmy for a film she shot and edited while studying production and editing at Berkeley City College. Congratulations to Paige on that. On behalf of the board, we also would like to welcome all the students and faculties, teachers, and administrators, everyone who makes Peralta College's work, and especially our students, welcoming back for the new semester. We hope that everyone has a successful year. Tomorrow is September 11th, so we'd like to extend just a quiet moment for that, and also for, extend our board sympathies to the family and friends of longtime and beloved Peralta employee Cheryl Quinn, many as you know, passed away recently, and we'd like to adjourn in her memory, Mr. President.
All right. Moment of silence. Meeting is adjourned.
I don't get why you voted for that. It's full of graphics, not particularly my own firm, et cetera. I don't know what the fuck you're talking about.
Well, I, it's a million, it's 99 years, it's a million dollars a business. It's not a small firm. It's a big firm.
And this didn't go to competitive bid anyways.
You know, if you had.